Welcome to Perspectives Online and on air from WFSU Public Media. I'm Tom Flanagan. This is our fourth in a series of political perspectives in the run-up to the August 18th primary election in Leon County. And just to let you know, the program was recorded on Tuesday, July 7th for playback both on WFSU FM and the WFSU Public Media Facebook page on Thursday, July 14th. And today, we're going to talk with the five candidates vying for Tallahassee City Commission Seat 2. We'll meet those folks in a sec. And before we do, here's how the action's gonna go forward. Each candidate will have a few minutes to talk about their background and the unique qualities that they bring to the office. And then we'll dive into some issues specific to the city of Tallahassee in order to get a feeling for how each contender would approach those matters if elected. And even though we don't enforce those strict time limits on statements like so many of these debate-type things do, we do ask our guests to be as brief as they can so we can cover more territory in the course of the conversation. So let's meet our candidates for Tallahassee City Commission Seat 2. We did that random drawing before the program to get an order of response. And randomly, it selected the incumbent to go first. And that is Curtis Richardson. And we'll give you a chance to talk here in a second, sir. So good for you to join us. We appreciate that. Next up, we are going to have Trish Brown, who will be speaking. And Trish, we love to see you there on cam. It is so wonderful that you could join us. Also, and this will be the third person we'll hear from, is Bill Shack, who is no stranger to these contests. And Bill, thank you for joining us as well. Jerry C. will go fourth, and then we'll round it out with Lynette Halter. That's the lineup. And let's get started with the first person to win the drawing, as it were, and that is the incumbent in Tallahassee City Commission Seat 2, Curtis Richardson. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Tom. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank you and WFSU for giving us this opportunity. You know, it's always been a pleasure of mine over the years to be a part of the WFSU Fund Drive to raise the necessary funds to keep programs like this on the air, commercial-free. And so it's good to see you again today, Tom. I'm Curtis Richardson. I'm running for reelection to the City of Tallahassee Commission Seat 2. I have been a Tallahassee resident for about 40 years now. I came to Tallahassee to attend Florida State University and graduated with a master's degree in school psychology and started my career as a school psychologist in the Gadsden School District and have been a part of this community ever since, serving in one capacity or another to make this community better for all of her citizens. I'm married. My wife and I have been married for 30 years now. We have two beautiful daughters. My oldest is a midshipman at the United States Naval Academy, and my youngest is a rising 10th grader at Leon High School. I started my political career, Tom, as a member of the Leon County School Board. I was frustrated by the inequities that existed in the school district at the time and decided I would run for the school board to make a difference in the education that our children received regardless of their zip code at the time or the school that they were zoned for. We didn't have school choice at the time. And we made some substantial gains in the school district and laid the foundation for where the district is today. I would later go on to be elected as a Democrat to the Florida House of Representatives, representing parts of Leon and Gadsden Counties, and served for eight years in that capacity until I was term-limited out. And then decided to run for the city commission. I'm a resident of the South Side of Tallahassee. My wife and I decided to build our home here and to raise our children in this area. And I felt that more needed to be done to improve the quality of life of those who live in the southern part of our city, even though we run at large and represent all of the city of Tallahassee. So that's my political career. I've also been involved in organizations like the NAACP, president of my Neighborhood Association, Leadership Tallahassee, Leadership Florida, the Blueprint 2000 Committee, and on and on, because I believe in this community. I love Tallahassee, and I want to see her be the best that she can be. I've served six years now on the city commission, and I think we've accomplished a tremendous amount in moving this city forward. And finally, Tom, my experience in leadership on the commission, I've served two terms as mayor pro temp, is even more necessary now because of this pandemic and the challenges that we're going to face in providing the high level of quality services that we provide to our citizens with the $7 million budget deficit over the next year. And so I look forward to continuing to serve this community and ask for your listeners' support for Curtis Richardson, Leon City of Tallahassee Commission Seat 2. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Next up for introductory remarks is Trish Brown. Ms. Brown, thanks again for joining us. It's all yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, FS, WFSU, for having me here. Very honored, very grateful to be on the air with you. Again, I'm Trish Brown, and I'm running for city commission in, that's the people's seat, which is Seat 2. I'm a grassroots community organizer, and I've lived in Tallahassee for over 20 years, and I have family roots here stemming back generations upon generations. I had, later on in the 90s, the late 90s, met with Ms. Maisha Mitchell, who has become an incredible muse and mentor in my life. And I went on to help her develop and create programs such as French Town Governors Revitalization and Front Porch Florida Projects and programs such as Diabetes New, Obesity New, Power Up Kids, Computer Kids, Senior Walk. After that, then I became a farmer, and I started doing farmer's marketing along the Panhandle and providing organic and fresh produce for people, starting to understand the food disparities that were happening throughout the Panhandle and Florida itself, and the importance of community gardens. So that has always been a passion for me as far as like fruits and vegetables, but also the healing effects of many herbs and different produce that can naturally heal you organically. I then wanted to further make myself more involved progressively by becoming an activist and starting to do work, you know, directly impacting positive-wise as far as like... So I started joining groups like Florida Poor People's Campaign, Tallahassee Community Action Committee, Dignity Florida, Dream Defenders, New Florida Majority, and Flic, and We Think Energy, and Tally 100. But there's so many other organizations that I also like ended up being a part of and an alliance with. I was educated about the injustices in our communities, but also I'm part of that community, part of these communities, and I know what it is to be impacted, and I know what it is to not have impacted people's voices heard. So I'm all about bringing people to the front and having their voices to be lifted and for them to be a part of the change, the positive change that we need in this, in this community, in all communities, and throughout the state and throughout the nation. So I'm about lifting, educating, and empowering people, absolutely. And as a grassroots organizer, I know, and I know definitely that we do make a difference as well as making positive change in our communities. I'm part of Dignity Florida, of course, like I said before, and we went on to pass the dignity bill, which is all incarcerated women to receive quality hygiene products for free. The Tammy Jackson bill just passed recently, which I'm very proud of, which we're all proud of, that allows, or better yet, restricts pregnant incarcerated women from not, from being restrained while giving birth. This is outrageous that these things are happening in our prisons with women. So it's really sad that these things are still continuing like they have, and we had to actually fight for moral change, you know, in our prison system. But there's still much more to do on all levels. I'm also an advocate for refugee immigrants here in Tallahassee and throughout Florida, as well as trying to expand myself throughout the US and over into other countries. I'm also a Hurricane Michael victims advocate. So that's from here in Tallahassee and throughout the Panhandle. And I'll continue to keep advocating for all, like, victims of disaster. I grew up in a generation of poverty, and I've, I suffer from a lack of educational equity. So I know exactly what that feels like to be deprived of resources and technology and books that are updated and the resources to like help you thrive and continue to go on to college. It was devastating for me when I had started college, where I thought that I was, I left high school being an honor roll student only to like end up in college and not realizing that I was not as smart as I thought I was. That impacted me, and it traumatized me, and it made me feel inadequate when it came down to trying to achieve my goal to finish college. Also with just still suffering with poverty in the community, I had to struggle just like survive and to eat. So I had to end up dropping out of college. And it was because of the lack of educational equity. And I see it in our communities here. And I'm definitely, I know that we can do more, and there should be done more as far as the impacted communities, as far as the education equity that we lack in here. I suffered with gentrification and high housing costs and low wages and abusive policing and poor healthcare. So as a grassroots, I was taught about outreach organizing and training and what it takes to get dirty and to be on the boots on the ground, be the boot on the ground to make the changes that we need. We have to work hard, and we've got to be involved, and we've got to be connected with people directly. We just can't sit there and just make decisions. We need to be a part of what it takes to make a positive change in our community and change narratives. So I love, you know, I love and I have like a great passion for our people in our communities. My desire is to bring justice, equality, and peace and prosperity to all communities throughout the state and throughout our nation and throughout the world. And I have that willingness to fight and sacrifice for our people. I think that makes me naturally and organically a perfect candidate for city commission. Our people have the answers. They've always had the answers because they know, they know what the suffering is for them. They know the need that they, that they, that is desired and expected, expected of our city officials to serve us with. Our people need to be included at the table, and I want, yeah, I want to bring the people at the, you know, be safe.
Okay. Thank you. We'll come back to you on some specific issues here, Trish, and we appreciate your introductory comments. Let's hear now from Bill Shack, who is our next candidate here on our WFSU Public Media Forum. Mr. Shack, go right ahead, sir.
All right. Thank you, Tom, and thank you to you and WFSU. It's always a pleasure to be talking to you. And congratulations to everybody here on the call. And I think you all are terrific for running for office. I think that's what our community needs. And, but my name is Bill Shack. I am running for city commission seat once again. I believe that I'm qualified to do this job. One of the reasons is my path to get here. I've been in the restaurant business for over 30 years. And when you work in the restaurant business, you get to meet lots of people. You get to meet organizations that need help. And I was someone that always said yes when somebody needed something. And by doing that, I got to start getting involved in more and more nonprofits and organizations in the community. And pretty soon, I began to think that those organizations are the way to impact your communities more than running a business. But they both go hand-in-hand, and I think that's where we are now. This community is demanding change, equality, fairness for all. And I think it needs to start with our political process. So I'm someone who believes that we need to bring some change to this community. We need to bring some action to this community. As I've been involved in many nonprofits, I was an executive director for a nonprofit that helped the intellectually disabled. And there's a community that continues to need help. And they struggle constantly, and organizations that help them also struggle constantly to get funding. And as someone who's been in the restaurant business, my career brought me to the Carney Center, where I'm still in the restaurant business, but in a totally different way. And in a way that is, has made me realize that we have some serious issues in our city. And my job at the Carney Center over the past five years plus has continued to want me to run for office. And basically, we need to make some changes in this community. We need to make sure that we're looking out for people. And I believe in a city that has such a giant budget as Tallahassee, we certainly have the funds to do that. And when we continue to have record poverty and record crime that are not being addressed, I just think there needs to be a change. And, you know, something personal about me, I've been married to my wife Holly for almost 15 years, or over 15 years now. We have a daughter who goes to Lincoln High School, and I certainly want her future here in Tallahassee to be great. And so they're my motivation for running, but mostly it's because of the work I do in this community that have led me to this point. So my resume is on my website, BillShack.com for your listeners and for your viewers to take a look at. I don't need to talk about all that. And I'm looking forward to getting into some real conversations about how we can all move our city forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill Shack. Next up for introductory comments is Jerry C. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you so much again for this opportunity. I am a retired professor from FSU. Uh-oh, am I still there?
Still there. We see you, Jerry.
Okay. I just can't see you. Here we are. Okay. From FAMU, where I taught in the school business, the English department, and I was the director of Upper Bound for eight years. I think it was that opportunity that allowed me to recognize the differences in the zip codes. I have a property and a business in 32304, but I live in 32301. I've been struck by the ways in which 32304 have been cast into a very unpleasant light. And I've been struck by the ways in which the city has allowed itself to create its own third world. We have various projects and activities and programs and plates that never reach 32304, even though those projects and programs were intended for 32304. So after quite a bit of advocacy at the city hall and the city councils and CRAs and blueprints, I finally felt like Fanny Lou Hamer, and I was sick and tired of being sick and tired. And so here I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and for our introductory segment of the program. And if you're just joining us, this is Tallahassee City Commission Seat 2 from WFSU Public Media. We wind up with Lynette Halter. Yes, ma'am. It is your forum now.
I'm new to this process. I haven't ever run for office before. I am a retired veteran. After 27 years in the Navy Reserves, I'm used to serving. When I moved to Tallahassee about 12 years ago, I thought this was the best southern town that I've ever been in. And I finally found my place again after leaving Texas many, many, many years ago. But I discovered there was something interesting going on. The city was always, the county was always being investigated by the FBI. That made me scratch my head a lot. Now, I studied political science for many years and decided I did not want to go into politics. It was just messy. But also the crime rate, and that is what impelled me to run. It impelled me to the point that I was walking from door to door from September until March. When I talked to somebody who was in elected office, they'd tell me, oh, if you're reading the stats in the Tallahassee Democrat, they're inflated. I talked to people, they tell me they're underinflated. That keeps me running because it keeps me mad. People need to be safe from violent crime. And our local city-county politicians refuse to recognize that bad gangs have moved in. Now, the cop on the street knows this, but they're not allowed to say a word about it. And it's gotten worse. When I was getting signatures, I heard of too many people who had seen somebody die, seen somebody shot, knifed. It's, and that's not okay. I believe Tallahassee has failed in the basic requirement of government to protect their citizens. Now, I wouldn't doubt that all the other people running are fine people, but I don't find anybody addressing the problem. Pardon me. This was to remind me for this meeting. And obviously, I really know that it's, that it is happening now. And that's where I stand. I do not want to run for office in particular, didn't want to do this. I certainly don't want to stay in office. I'd rather stay retired. But we've got to take our city back from the violent criminals. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette Halter. And that brings us back to where we started here with the incumbent in the race, Curtis Richardson. One of the, if not the, primary factors that drive so many of the concerns that have been articulated just in these opening remarks here on our forum is the income disparity, particularly as regards the aforementioned 32304 area code. But throughout the city, there are certainly pockets of poverty that contribute to everything from crime to lack of economic opportunity to any number of other dysfunctions that we have in our city. And for the past, what, two years, I believe, starting with the one Forbes article, there has been a national spotlight on that disparity. So Curtis Richardson, again, as the sitting commissioner, what do you do about that? What can you do about it as a member of the Tallahassee City Commission to address the income disparity in this community and the other problems that are tied to that? And you better take yourself off mute, sir. That way, that would help a bunch.
Thank you, Tom. It, Tom, it's not an easy fix. It's, it's an issue that has existed in this community for a good bit of time. I've been on the commission for six years now, and I can tell you that has been my laser focus, is to address the issues. That's why my wife and I chose to build our home on the South Side of town. We've been the victim of crime four times. Our house has been burglarized twice. Our cars have been burglarized, sitting in our driveway. And so I'm very invested in improving the conditions that exist here on the South Side of town. As a commissioner, we have increased funding for nonprofit organizations that provide services to individuals in low-income areas. We're spending over $2 billion a year in that regard. Unfortunately, with the pandemic and the reduction in our budget, our city budget, we won't be able to do better this year. But we're always looking to do better, and we're partnering with organizations. That's why I support the Children's Services Council, because it will also bring revenue in to address the issues that impact families and children in our community. I retired from Lively Technical College. I'm a big proponent of career and technical education. One year of training at Lively Technical College can move a person out of poverty, Tom. One year of training in welding, and an individual can make upwards of $100,000 a year. We've got to make sure that our children have those kinds of opportunities, opportunities for high-wage, high-skill jobs. And that's been a priority of this commission, is to grow our local businesses and to recruit businesses to the community that will pay those high wages that require sufficient skills. We had just approved a solicitation of a company to this community. It was called Operation Juggernaut, and that company was going to come in and provide those kinds of jobs. That's how you get people out of poverty, by getting them the education that they need, the training that they need, and then the jobs that will come with that. Tom, I grew up in the segregated South. I lived in a home where we slept three to a bed. And my mother raised us while my father traveled in the military. So I know what living in those conditions is all about, and I know what education can do to move you out of that station in life. And so those are the kinds of things that I'm committed to. We're looking at improving housing in our community. We've got a partnership with Habitat for Humanity and the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium to increase low-income and workforce housing in our community, improving our neighborhoods through investing in infrastructure and improving the neighborhoods to make them attractive to people who want to live in. So those are the things that we are doing. Can there be more? Of course. Government can't do it all, though. We are going to depend on this entire community, the business sector, the nonprofit sector, neighborhoods, all of us working together to move our neighbors out of poverty.
Thank you very much, sir. Trish B., same question for you there on income disparity. You had mentioned in your introductory remarks, you certainly have some firsthand experience in that realm. So what do you do as a city commissioner to address that?
Um, we, we got to like pursue like a bottom-up investment strategy. We have to put, we have to invest in people, not in large corporations or large contractors. We, we've had enough of the failed regonomics of the, for the last 40 years. It's, it's time that we like do something different. And we need to redirect CRA and blueprint funds to buildings and turning existing buildings into quality public housing, expand and improve the first-time home buyers program. You know, not high interest rates on, on people who have bad credit. That's set up for failure. We, we have to prove the inadequate public transportation and bill unions, including a city union, and make sure that all the companies that contract with the city pay at least $15 to $25.53 an hour. No more like having like contractors and businesses come in that don't have on the top of their agenda putting money back into the community. No more on contracts or businesses that are not going to mandatorily pay people $15 to $25 an hour in our community. We, we don't need you if you're here to try to take advantage of our communities. Implement free and affordable healthcare and childcare options for low and, and no-income residents. We need to make sure that when previously incarcerated people get out into the world, they aren't blocked by restrictive housing and employment practices. As far as like, you know, we, we knew before the economic recession that the wealthy would try and bring cuts, just like they did in 2008. There is no reason to believe that this is necessary. We can maintain and expand our public resources by cutting projects like the $60 million TPD headquarters, $53 million convention center that we don't necessarily need, and actually start putting resources back into the community. $78 million for the Northeast Corridor project. We got to start redirecting the CRA and the blueprint funds. The money is there, as far as like if, if you're to ask me that. But from, you know, this, we can expand affordable housing, and we can work on the infrastructures and public transportation and environmental sustainability. Let's like, you know, give, let's work on these apartment complexes that were for students. complexes that um were for students, that they're not being occupied, and let's make those um, those housing um for people. Um, after 2008, wealth was redistributed to the wealthiest in our community. Real economic growth means getting resources to people that need it. So let's start investing in people um and not profit.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Trish Brown. Bill Shack, same question for you, sir.
Okay, thank you for the question. Um, you know, the facts are economic segregation's been a problem in the city for years, and the city commission loves to take, talk about the millions of dollars they're going to put into this part of uh Tallahassee and this part of Tallahassee. But um, you know, just putting a, a, an archway across a road doesn't make that road all of a sudden a, or that community a better community. You know, we've been talking about these things. The city's been talking about helping um for years. And uh, you know, until we get to a point where we're really acting and doing it, um, we're just going to continue to, to be the same. But uh, you know, here we are 20 years later, and many of the still, the same areas of town still don't have streetlights, and still don't have sidewalks, and still don't have grocery stores. And we're talking about uh, you know, food deserts constantly. E- every election, we're talking about the same thing. And until we get to a point where we're, we're actually making a difference, um, you know, it just seems to me that uh as much as we keep promising, we're not really delivering. And I'm someone that is proposing action and, and delivering on the promises that were, were given our residents in all areas of town, not just three two three oh four, but all the areas of town that have been crying for help for a long time. And uh, i- it's about time that we actually address it. I think the city commission and our city should be embarrassed that uh COVID-19 has exposed so much in our community as far as uh, you know, over 14,000 kids that go hungry because there's no school. Uh, I think that's an embarrassment, and, and we should address that, and we should be talking about proactive things now as to what we're going to do after COVID is gone. Because what we're doing is, in the cover of a Zoom meeting, we're talking about $2 million for electric cars, charging stations around parks. I mean, wha- what are we thinking about right now when we should be addressing the issues that are right in front of us and unfortunately have been in front of us and in front of this commission and some of these commissioners for many, many years? So uh, what do you say we start addressing these issues instead of just talking about?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Jerry C., you mentioned during your introductory remarks to the uh income disparity problem, and it sounded like you had some ideas for potential uh routes to go in addressing that head on. What are your thoughts, ma'am?
I think first, you need to know that the folks in three two three oh four have an average income of $16,000 for a family of four. So we're talking about a very uh crucial crisis. And if we're going to fix it, we're going to have to start with some infrastructure kinds of things. We're going to have to claim some oversight of the school system here, because the school system fails our children at 70% in reading. If you can't read, you're not going to get a high-tech job. And this has been going on for over 20 years, these kinds of failures. People don't look at the data, so they're not really familiar with what's happening. Our kids can't read. Now, those uh tech jobs that have been mentioned require an entry test in order to get into them. And so uh, you're not going to just get there and go over TCC, particularly where they have quite a few tech kinds of things. You can't just get into that because you want to. So if you can't read, that's not going to help you going over to TCC or Lively. They have tests as well. So we're going to have to admit that the school system here, while I am not running the school board, as a taxpayer, I'm expecting them to do the job. And they're not doing it, and they haven't done it. And we have generations of people who can't read. The other thing is, there is affordable housing that has to happen, and we have to figure out a way perhaps to make owners out of folks who make $16,000 a year, so that they have some skin in the game. In the past, people have used the co-op method for people to gain some access to ownership. That could possibly work here. But at the end of the day, the affordable housing is a must. We need to think about some oversight of the CRA and the blueprint, because they are being allowed to run by staff. In other words, the people want one thing, the staff wants something else. If the people who are elected to represent the body, they must do that in their capacity as being our representatives. They may not go in there and start representing themselves and what they think. That's not their job. Their job's to represent what the people want. Staff is there to make sure that the people get what they asked for. In this particular scenario, it's flipped. Staff tells the elected what to do, and that is not getting us where we need to go. The reallocation of those TPD funds is going to happen. We're going to have to have people who are prepared to work with folks who are in mental health crises, who are handicapped, elderly, and any other kind of way, meeting of some kind of social service, not the police. Now, when you look at the budget, the TPD is the only line item that has that kind of money. And we are not asking TPD to take care of mental health and other social issues. We need to create something like they have, I've mentioned before, up in Eugene, Oregon, which has been in the works for 30 years, where they have a team of people 24/7 to go out and take care of the issues that surround homelessness or any kind of mental health crisis, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The environment. You know, I like development as much as the next person, but why can't we find developers who know how to work with a canopy, a forest, forested area? Why do we have to always have developers that come, and the only thing they know how to do is clear-cut? No, look, don't get it twisted. They're making money off taking those trees down. That is not some kind of thing. They're just throwing it away. No, they get money for those trees. So why can't we find what the best practices are for people who want to live in a beautiful forested area? 2020, 21st century. We can't find that, we just go with whoever wants to cut the trees down, to go into wetlands and other kinds of wildlife scenarios and just ruin it. We need to embrace what we have here and make sure that we protect it. Our returning citizens, what are they going to do? They're our brothers, our sisters, our cousins, our uncles. They need an opportunity to reinvent themselves, and we don't have that here. They need a place to live. They need to learn how to get some work done. They need the high-tech skills, because they probably learned how to read in jail. And we need to make sure that they have a chance to get themselves back into the saddle, as it were. You know, $350 gets you a felon, felony attached to your name. $350. They just changed it to $750. So you make a mistake, you do something, whatever, and it's worth $350. You get to be a felon for the rest of your life for $350, $750. So also, I'm asking here is that we take a look at what the truth is. One of my students said, Dr. C., I'm glad you're running, because you can weaponize truth, and it's exactly right. Let's take a look at what the truth, what the truths are. And let's not try to be obstructionists and get in the way of solutions. All kind of solutions out there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just need to bring them home.
Thank you, Ms. C. Lynette Hader, you uh, you talked about uh the law enforcement component, which also is tied into, of course, income disparity, poor neighborhoods, that type of thing. How do you work on that? And then if we have a few moments, we could probably get into some policing ideas, too. Go ahead.
In terms of the police department, I believe we've got a very good police department here that works well with our communities. It's rather diverse, and they love the population, and most, a lot of the population loves them. But something happened. How politics affect them. I think of what happened with a recent candidate for police chief, and therefore, we just have an intern. It looks like that our city commissioners interfere with the police. They should tell the police what to do in terms of set goals, and then they figure out how to do it. I see that our, our at-risk youth are especially at risk from gangs. And that's not recognized by anybody, which bothers me a very great deal. But you also brought up the subject of um, jobs and businesses. It's very difficult to get a new business started in Tallahassee. I know of a, somebody who's just trying to put a convenience store in South Tallahassee, and it's taken him two years. We need to make it so businesses can get started better. I do not mean funding businesses to get them to come in, but to make the permitting process not so arduous. I think I would come back and, and give rewards to people in those departments that came up with ideas. And I do not think we should pick and choose businesses. Who knows what business is going to survive, or which one's going to come here? Let's try to get them to all come, and whichever ones will, will build in whichever part of the city. And I'd rather it were the south and the west side, where they need jobs the most. But people will travel to work. We need more businesses. And the education component that was brought up by the other candidates is absolutely. I was a substitute teacher, and I saw this. And if you put it back on, on the teachers, and the teachers are allowed to do what they do, instead of passing students on, the student has to, has to learn to read to go to the next grade, they will learn to read, and we'll help them get there.
Thank you, Lynette Holder. We appreciate that. Folks, we have less than 10 minutes to go in our uh city commission seat two forum here on WFSU Public Media. And uh, let's see, it takes usually about, what, um, a little bit over a minute, depending on how many other folks get in the elevator to get from the plaza level up to the fourth floor of Tallahassee City Hall, if my memory serves me correctly. Let's uh, let's get a final statement, if we could, a little elevator speech, if you will, from each of the five contenders here for the seat. And we'll start again with our incumbent Curtis Richardson for a quick wrap-up. Sir?
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Tom, I love this community. Uh, I, I think if I listened to the pitch that my opponents have given, I don't know that I would still be here in Tallahassee. But I love this community. I've been involved to make a difference, to improve the quality of life of all of her citizens, regardless of where they live. That's why I'm serving on the city commission, and certainly look forward to reelection uh and serving another four years. We have accomplished a great deal in moving this community forward. Do we have challenges? Absolutely, we do. But the city of Tallahassee has been twice recognized as an all-America city. Uh, nation, national magazines have recognized us for our quality of living. Uh, we have programs for our senior citizens, for our youth, our tempo program that looks at disaffected youth and try to get them back into the system. Uh, our Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy, providing employment opportunities for young people during the summer. We have worked to reduce crime in this community. We were number one, now we're number three, and that trajectory, trajectory continues uh to decline. Uh, do we have challenges? Of course we do. But if we all work together to address those challenges, there is unlimited potential for this great city, and we will be the model for other cities uh to emulate in terms of our uh respect for the environment. We passed a resolution to become uh energy, uh alternative energy efficient by the year 2050. Uh, we have worked hard to bring job opportunities for this community, so we're not so reliant on state government. Uh, we've worked to invest in our neighborhoods, especially those south-side neighborhoods like Bond and South City. We've invested $6 million into the Bond community. We're working with the Tallahassee Housing Authority to revitalize and redevelop the Orange Avenue Apartments uh for people who live in those low-income apartments. So the future is bright, but if we all work together, we can make Tallahassee be the kind of city that all of us can be proud of, regardless of where we live. And I'm looking forward to doing that.
Ding ding, goes the uh, the elevator. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Trish Brown, you got a couple minutes to wrap up, please.
Hey, let's um, let's, let's, let's start with uh um, uh, reducing crime. Uh, we can, we can do that by having a civilian police account, accountability council. Let's put a CPAC in. Uh, let's start um investing in people in the community. Let's start um putting money back into the communities, impacted communities, and throughout our, our, um, our, our city. Uh, let's like help um lift up um and implement more equity um in the school system. Let's push for that, because we are lacking in that. Let's start giving folks $15 to $27, $25 an hour um, and uh, and make sure that like the um, the, the project um, and, and, and uh, and the businesses that come here are, like I said before, at the top of their agenda, to put money back into um, to the communities. Stop like, in um, putting all this money into projects, again, like the police station with the $60 million, the northeast corridor, and um, and the um, the convention center, the TPD again. Uh, let's stop putting all that money into them, and let's start investing in people. Um, again, uh, my name is uh Trish Brown, and I feel like this, we need to keep reminding city electives that these are the people's seat that they're sitting in, and um, pe- um, and people have put those on people in the people's seats. It is our duty, and as a grassroots community organizing activist, I'm going to continue as my duty to um, passionately with love to serve our people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. Bill Shack, your turn, sir.
Thank you, Tom. I wish we had more time to talk about more issues, but uh, that's part of the, part of the deal sometimes. But uh, you know, you don't have to live in Tallahassee 40 years to call Tallahassee home, and Tallahassee is my home. Uh, I care about what happens here. Um, I lead from the front, where it's important that others succeed, and I've done that my entire career. I also do my homework. And uh, you know, one of the things you learn in, when you, when you run for office, is what's important. And uh, we have a great community. No one doubts that. We might make lots of lists and lots of top tens and lots of silver awards, but the bottom line is, we still have the poorest zip code in the entire state of Florida. We also have years and years of economic segregation that we all know, but we're really not addressing. These are real issues that we need to be focused on. Sure, it's terrific that we're going to make a pledge for 2035, but the bottom line is, we have no idea what that's going to cost. And we approved that and said, yes, we're going to do it, and not one member of the staff told anybody how much it's going to cost. These are things we cannot do right now. We have issues right now in front of us. Sure, it's terrific to make plans for 20, 30 years down the road, but the bottom line is, when a hurricane of category three hits Tallahassee, you can scrap those plans, or when a pandemic hits your city, you can scrap those plans, because now you got to focus on something else. And there needs to be a focus on post-COVID-19, and I don't think we're doing it right now. This city commission's being very reactive right now and not proactive. And if we don't get to a proactive state in our city, we're going to run into some serious trouble. We already know we have a budget shortfall, and I don't think our city's really understanding that, because we're making decisions in the cover of darkness in a Zoom meeting where we're deciding on money that we're spending that we shouldn't be spending. We need to be proactive, and we need to have new leadership that does it. We appreciate the leadership of everyone on the city commission, but the bottom line is, in Tallahassee right now, we need to have a new direction and a new focus. And someone like myself, you know, I'm not, I'm not involved in my community just because I'm running for office. I've been involved in my community, and I see what goes on, and that's why I'm running for office. I want to help make a change. And that's why I hope people will visit BillShack.com and support our campaign. But thanks again, Tom, and thanks to all the candidates.
Thank you, Bill Shack. Jerry C., you're up next.
Yes, thank you. And again, yes, we do have challenges. But what are going to be our answers? If we're going to be an all-American city, then all Americans are going to have to be served. We have a lack of vision. We have folks who want to do what they've always done. We are in a position of not knowing what the future is going to be. We're going to have to have people who can prepare us for that, not by looking backward, but by looking forward. We have various infrastructures in place that are not working for the benefit of the people. And it's time now, it's time now to make a change. Listen, you can stick with dial-up, or you can get fiber optics. It's up to you. I'm Jerry C., seat two. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry C. And Lynette Holder, you get the final word in our forum.
What I'll say is a little different. Why do we keep electing politicians who've never held a job? And they handle thousands of dollars? Now, I don't mean this applies to all the candidates. job, and they handle thousands of dollars? Now, I don't mean this applies to all the candidates or all of them, but this quite frequently happens. I'm retired. I have obviously known how to work for many years with the various different jobs, from teaching to developing housing. But we need the businesses, and we need to be safe in our cities. Basic is to be safe in our city, and that is improving here, but it's not improving enough, because we still don't have the police force we need with a police chief that is stood behind and supported by the city commissioners. Let's make our city better. Instead, we're trying to throw money at the latest and greatest charge cars and buses. And instead, let's get businesses and let's get our citizens safe. I'd love to see different buildings developed that are partly empty downtown, so there were apartments above. I'd love a place like that. There's so many places we can develop in Tallahassee for housing. But everybody needs to be safe more than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette Haldor, joined by Jerry C., Bill Shack, Trish Brown, and Curtis Richardson, all the contenders for Tallahassee City Commission's seat two coming up in the August 18th primary election. Thanks to all for taking part in our WFSU forum for the seat. And a reminder also, if you miss all or part of a Perspectives program, it's available online at wfsu.org and also on our WFSU Public Media Facebook page. Our program produced by WFSU Public Media in Tallahassee. Thanks going out to Taylor Cox, Paul Damm, Amy Diaz de la Viegas, Tricia Moynihan, and Lydell Rawls. Our Zoom facilitator and executive producer is Kim Kelling, and I'm Tom Plantigan. Next week, we'll hear from the two folks in the running for public defender in the Second Judicial Circuit. We invite you to join us then on air and online from WFSU Public Media. Take care.